Welcome to everyone joining us in council chambers as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh media. We are pleased that citizens participate in their local government, so welcome to all. Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Palmary.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Pansky.
Here.
Stepanek.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven.
Ms. Pansky, welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Little tough after six weeks since you made it. Get used to the weather?
It's not that bad. I miss the good stuff, though. Sixty-eight in February is not too shabby, so, but thank you.
Councilmember Palmary will now lead us in the invocation, so would everyone stand, and then we'll have our citizens, students, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have our four students come forward, and we have a certificate for you for helping us tonight, but first I'm going to ask you some questions. So, if you want to stand and face that direction, and Mom and Dad, you can take photos. I want your name, your age, where you go to school, and your favorite subject.
My name is Ally. I'm eight years old. I go to Jefferson Elementary School, and my favorite subject is writing.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nikki. I go to Jefferson Elementary School. I am seven years old, and my favorite subject is reading.
Thank you.
I'm Sean, and I am ten and a half today, and...
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I go to Smith Elementary School, and my favorite subject's math.
My name is Samantha. I'm eleven years old from Smith Elementary School. My favorite subject is music.
Thank you. Now, we have a certificate for all of you. Samantha, and Sean. So, thank you very much. Now, you can stay and watch the council meeting, learn about local government, or go home and do homework. I bet that's the first time they picked homework. First on the agenda is introduction of staff, so, city manager Roloff, would you take it from here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, we had done some introductions of some promotions within, and I think council appreciated even knowing when they're existing employees, and this employee actually needs no introduction, but Liz, is Liz in the back? Come on, Liz, come on up front. Liz Williams has been promoted to the position of Planner with the City of Oshkosh. You may recall that Dave Buck left us recently, and we did a little bit of reorganization, and Liz, she was trying to hide in the back, but it wasn't going to work very long. You all know Liz, but let me tell you a little bit about her. She's born and raised in Oshkosh, graduated UW-Oshkosh, and she interned for us several years ago while she was finishing up her program, and we took a liking to her, and she has worked her way up to, from Assistant to Associate, and now to full Planner with our organization. We're very pleased to have her. She's been working a lot with the neighborhood associations, and her other duties are expanding. She's been doing more at the Plan Commission meetings, and happy to continue to having her on our staff. So, thank you, Liz, for all the work you've done.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Liz. Now, how do we replace, well, you can't be replaced, but how do we fill that, how do we backfill?
You will get that person introduced to you at a subsequent meeting. He's actually started, but actually, he's, isn't he working on Neighborhood Association tonight?
He is.
So, you will meet, is it Jay, Steven, excuse, Steven, you'll meet Steven at the next meeting.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation by Go HNI, which stands for Greater Oshkosh, Healthy Neighborhood Incorporated. Shelley Reinkie, would you bring your associates and introduce them?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. So, my name is Shelley Reinkie, and I'm the Program Director for Go HNI, and this is Melody Walling. She is the Board Chair. I did a little bit of a PowerPoint for you, but, so. So, first of all, thanks for letting us come and give you an update on what we've been up to for the last, well, now, eight months, I guess it's been. So, I just wanted to, you know, kind of go over what we did in 2016, what we're planning for 2017. All right. So, in 2016, we provided support to the thirteen recognized Neighborhood Associations here. So, on your screen, we've got a little bit of a map of the city, and the colored areas indicate where the Neighborhood Associations are located. During that time, eighteen community building events were held. Two Oshkosh residents participated in resident leadership training, and I wanted to talk a little bit about this training because it was kind of a neat thing, something new that we tried. This was created and presented through a partnership with a number of other organizations, including Neighborhood Partners out of the Fox Cities, Goodwill of North Central Wisconsin, Winnebago County UW Extension, East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission, Stronger Together Fox Valley, the City of Oshkosh, and Go HNI. And residents from six neighborhoods that spanned from Oshkosh all the way through Appleton, Inum and Asha, came together for a four-part training series where they learned the fundamentals of neighborhood leadership. Session topics included relationship building, leading yourself and others, asset mapping, and then wrapped up with some action planning. So, we were hoping that we can make this an annual event where we would be able to send Oshkosh residents every year to this four-part training, but then also offer supplemental trainings quarterly throughout the year. And so, we're still, that partnership is still together and working on that.
Nice question. What, is there a cost associated with attending the training session?
No cost to the participants at all. So, the group of partners covered that cost and provided our skills and services in-kind just to be able to provide this kind of an opportunity regionally. So, that was kind of neat. There was also, four thousand eighty-one volunteer hours were invested on behalf of Oshkosh Neighborhoods in 2016, and that is valued at just under ninety-one thousand dollars. So, according to Independent Sector in 2015, they do, they do evaluation for volunteer time by state, and so, a volunteer hour in Wisconsin is valued at twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Nearly ten thousand dollars in community building and engagement funding was invested in the neighborhoods. More than two thousand dollars of in-kind donations were contributed on behalf of neighborhoods, and the total brought us to nearly a hundred and three thousand dollars of added value that was created just through our Community Building and Engagement Program in 2016. In October of 2016, we acquired our first real estate development project. This property is located in the Menominee South Neighborhood at 561 Bowen Street. Our anticipated outcomes for this completed project would be, we have plans to completely renovate the interior and exterior. Obviously, it will decrease the vacancy rate in the neighborhood, increase homeownership, improve the physical conditions, and also stabilize or increase the surrounding property values. And one of the reasons that we really like this property is because it's such a, it's such a visible location that we hope that it's going to inspire some confidence in the neighborhood when they see that properties are increasing and positive things are happening.
Shelley, just, what was the state of that property prior to acquisitions?
It had fallen into foreclosure sometime last summer. We found it through Fannie Mae, and were able to acquire it through the Fannie Mae Program, so. All right. In 2016, we were able to raise, well, and we were only really in operation now for six months, so we started actual work in June of 2016, and between June and December, we raised a little over fifty-eight thousand dollars in private funding on behalf of Oshkosh Neighborhoods. You see here some of our corporate partners, obviously the City of Oshkosh, so thank you for that. Aurora Healthcare was another contributor, Bemis Corporation, Wisconsin Public Service Foundation, The Waters, and the John E. Kinzel Foundation, along with a couple of individual donors as well. The way that our budget broke down in 2016, the top pie shows our budget sources, and it's broken out by public funding and private funding, so the lighter green is the public funding, which represents about three-fourths of the revenue that came in, and the dark green is the private funding, that's about one-fourth. We did, if you recall, when we executed our funding agreement back in May, that we did that over a three-year period. So, we're just starting out, but ultimately, when I come back here in 2019 and tell you where we're at three years later, that will be reimbursed. So, we're hoping that, you know, we'll be able to achieve self-sufficiency, and then any public funding that we receive would be invested into, say, real estate development and community building and engagement, and then turned over and invested back into the program, and so we can just kind of keep cycling it through. The bottom pie chart are our budget uses, and that's broken out by our Real Estate Development Program, which is the, I guess, the dark green. Community building is the lighter green, and then the turquoise is our operations. So, two-thirds of our budget goes directly toward neighborhood investment through our programs, and about a third goes to keeping our doors open and our lights on. All right. So, coming up in 2017, the first big thing that we have happening is on April 29th, we're going to host the very first ever Beautify Oshkosh, Create a Warm Welcome with Curb Appeal. This is an event where Melinda Myers, who's a nationally-known gardening expert, author, and television personality, is, she's created a custom presentation just for Oshkosh based on Curb Appeal. So, Melinda will be at the Best Western Waterfront Premier Hotel. From 8:30 to 11:30, she's going to do an hour-long presentation, and then an hour-long Q&amp;A and book signing. We anticipate two hundred homeowners and gardening enthusiasts to attend. We've got some prize baskets, Curb Appeal-related prize baskets that we'll be giving away at the event, and those were all contributed by local Oshkosh businesses. And the event has been sponsored by the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Community Foundation, Aurora, and Aurora Healthcare, and then a portion of the Urban Forestry Grant, so we'll be able to give away some free trees to participants who are interested in planting a tree. So, tickets are twenty dollars, and they're available through Go HNI. All you have to do is give me a call at (230) 2717, shoot me an email at shelley@gohni.org, and I'd be happy to direct you to how to get some tickets for that event. Also, in 2017, we are, we've got a few, a few goals set for how we want to impact the community this year. We would like to organize at least two new Neighborhood Associations. We plan to obviously rehab and sell 561 Bowen Street, acquire possibly two additional real estate development projects, also for rehab and sale. We'd like to provide that training opportunity to at least two more Oshkosh residents this year, more, if more are interested. Sponsor a minimum of fifteen community building events. We would like to see four thousand five hundred hours, volunteer hours invested on behalf of Neighborhoods this year, and we're aiming to create two hundred thousand dollars of added value through our programs in the community. Any questions for us?
Yes, Shelley, the two acquisitions for 2017, are you able to say in what area of the city they'll also be acquired?
I wish I would have brought that map. We, as a board, did come up with a ten-year targeted area map, and that encompasses most of the areas that the current Neighborhood Associations are in. So, I feel like it goes as far north as Murdoch, maybe even a little further north than that, as far south as, I believe, Twentieth on the south side, west to Sawyer, and then all the way to the lake on the east. So, it's a large area, but then even a higher priority are properties that lie within recognized Neighborhood Associations. And then we look at things like visibility of the project, our ability to impact positively the neighborhood through it, what the market is going to be like, you know, is there demand? Can we create demand for the house, and can we rehab it to a standard where it would be appealing to new homeowners? We have decided to kind of focus on the real estate development, selling to owner occupants versus the asset management side where we would maintain and manage those properties until we kind of get a feel for how this program is working before we start to acquire and maintain the properties and manage them ourselves.
And also, could you just briefly let our audience know if there is another Neighborhood Association that's interested in forming? What the process, do you walk them through that? Do they go straight to the Planning Department for recognition? Could you just briefly talk about that process?
Sure. So, anyone that's interested in organizing a Neighborhood Association can contact me directly, and I would be happy to walk them through the process. Typically, we, you know, we suggest that you have three to five people in your neighborhood that are supportive of the idea, that are willing to help and work as a core team to come up with things like a purpose statement, and some organizing rules, boundaries, a couple name options, and I can walk you through that whole process. Then, we would hold a general membership meeting where we invite everyone that lives within the boundaries of that neighborhood to come and learn about what's happening, and vote on whether or not they want to have a Neighborhood Association, and then they also get to vote on the fun things like the naming, and then figure out what kind of a first activity or project would be. And we have guidebooks, so lots of resources in the guidebook, and then obviously, I'm right there every step of the way to help.
And I just have one last follow-up question, and that was last year, when we, when the city awarded funding for Go HNI, there was discussion about doing a market analysis. Where is Go HNI in that process?
A market analysis as far as...
Sales and demand.
Okay. So, we've used some assessor data that we, so we partner with the Planning Department, and they can access assessor data that tells us what the average sale price has been within the neighborhood. So, we usually pinpoint on a map where, where the property lies, and then go out about three blocks in any direction, and look at what the average assessed value is in the area, what the average homeownership rate is, what the average sale price is. And we have set our target that for any property that we acquire, when we sell it, we want to shoot between ten to twenty percent above that average assessed value. And so, that's how we can kind of gauge where we want to set our price point for selling the properties. Thank you.
And no further questions. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Now, Ms. Roloff, I'll turn it back to you for a recognition of Sergeant Matt Harris.
Well, I think several council members approached me about recognizing Sergeant Harris. Sergeant Harris is here. He's been our Special Events Officer for several years now, and Chief's moved some, shuffled the deck a little bit, and given Matt some new responsibilities, but wanted to just bring him up and just thank him for all the work he's done. Chief, I'll let you take it over from there.
Certainly, and good evening. Many people in the city know Sergeant Harris. When I first came to the city, he was my, he was my link on to with everything that we have going on here. That truly is exciting on any weekend day, and any opportunity that there's something going on. You typically saw Sergeant Harris running around and making sure that it went smoothly during the event, but many of us didn't pay attention to what he did before the event started, and that's really, I think, where his magic came into play. Sergeant Harris has been the supervisor responsible for coordinating most of the special event activities throughout the city for the Police Department for the last seven years. If you ever had a chance to follow Matt around during a parade or a large event, you get exhausted just watching all the effort that he puts into things. His coordination both before and during the event, as well as after the event, I will probably be hard-pressed to have his replacement give me that much energy, and Eric will appreciate that comment. His attention to detail is incredible, and we owe a lot of the safety and success of our events to the hard work that he has accomplished over these last seven years. Matt's moving on to other job duties within the Police Department, and I'm looking forward to him accomplishing great things in the coming years. He takes on new responsibilities for me within the Police Department. So, I give you Sergeant Matt Harris.
Speaking as a counselor, Matt, all the work you put in is just amazing, and we thank you for it. Speaking as an event organizer and someone who's worked with you for seven years, the things you bring to our events and how you truly help the events to be better and safer in that, and there's some, again, there's some, as we said with Liz earlier tonight, there's some big shoes to fill, but thank you for everything you've done. You've really helped make Oshkosh Event City.
Thank you. We will now move to citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? And we will need your name and address.
Yep, I have it all written down.
Okay.
My name is Ben Goikee. I live at 7388 Harbor Bay Road, Oshkosh. I lived in Oshkosh all my life, so I'm the oldest one here. I really, I recently spoke to Jim Collins about the parking on Harbor Bay Road that is not restricted under current rules. Harbor Bay Road is twenty feet wide. Before I go further, I'd like to just mention, well, Harbor Bay Road is a beltway that has two links, coming down to Harbor Bay Road from A, Keenville, and Driftwood. And this is getting to be a popular area, especially when it comes to the Lighthouse Park, Point, DNR, and all that that's included down there. I call it Lighthouse Road going down there because I live on the lake, and it's almost as busy as A. It's also busier on Harbor Bay Road because of the eagles nest about two hundred yards north of Driftwood. It's been there a few years, and quite a bit of the population of the Menominee Indian Tribe come there just for that fact. I also wanted to address the oppositions I had at the Advisory Committee, and there were only, there's only three housing units on the west side of Harbor Bay. There's eight on the east side with eleven mailboxes. So, the opposition's arguments were against this, were, there's a, there's a fire hydrant on the west side, whereas so is the main, the water main on the west side of the street, and therefore the hot fire hydrant. That was one. The neighborhood is connected just north of us, which are so easy to walk, well, those are all regulated by no parking overnight and no parking on one side. They all are. Other neighbor comments were, kids will be kids, and soon they'll be gone. And I says, all of us in this room are going to be gone soon, someday, eventually. So, it was, it didn't die. I use it in an attorney's term, it was irrelevant. Now, let's see. There has been even less room in the winter when the snowbanks cover the edges of the road. You can't plow too close to the east side of the road because of the mailboxes that are right almost to the road. There's only a foot of shoulder. I think I said the road is twenty feet wide. I think that parking on Harbor Bay Road creates a hazard. I've been living on it for thirty-seven years, and I've just been noticing the last three years, and I know I had a crash on it, but that's just me. I've heard the postal carriers comment, and they're blocked sometimes. They called the police one time. There are no sidewalks on Harbor Bay Road or adjoining links, so people use them for walking dogs, little kids on bicycles, and so on and so on with exercise. It's really neat that way. It's comfortable, it's inviting, and it's pretty, but also, I'm talking parking. There is quite a little subdivision there. It's called the Brash-Keenville subdivision.
Mr. Goikee, we have to kind of wrap it up. Your five minutes are up.
You've hit your five minutes?
Five minutes are almost up, so kind of wrap it up, please.
Okay, and there's also the regulations on the sections, all fifteen feet of clearance. We, I have only thirteen foot of clearance if someone's parked on the side. Thirteen feet of clearance. If there's two cars parked on the side, your guess is as good as mine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
I have a question.
You'll have to, you'll have to stand over there.
That would be on the agenda, that would be on the agenda.
Yeah. Is there any, anyone else who would like to come forward and talk, or speak to the council?
Tim Ernst, 23 East Melvin Avenue. And I am from ORC, the Oshkosh Renters Coalition. ORC provides resources to help renters in this community be able to access and appreciate the full scope of their rights. Since we began, we have met resistance on some of our positions. This resistance began online and has now begun to happen in person. The escalation of response to ORC's positions on several renters' issues in the community, most notably the inspection ordinance, implies two things to me. Either ORC is really, really factually incorrect, or we are gaining some kind of ground on the landlord lobby in Oshkosh. Based on ORC interactions with opponents to the ordinance, I am fairly confident when I state that the latter is the case and not the former. When ORC last addressed this council, we offered informed responses to the variety of misrepresentations on the inspection ordinance used as arguments against it. As of yet, we have heard no direct response to our claims. Rather, opponents of the ordinance repeat the same fabricated problems over and over again, excuse me, without additional support or clarification. And I don't know about anyone else here, but I don't want Oshkosh to be a post-truth kind of town. I think we need meaningful factual engagement on these issues, and it is for, that lack of meaningful engagement seems indicative of the lack of a stable position from the opposition, and is for these reasons, ORC still maintains that the rental inspection ordinance is in the best interest of tenants in this community. We know there are disagreements on this conclusion, but we are glad to report that meetings have happened between ORC and landlords in town. And one area of definite agreement that we found out is that the rollout of the inspection program needs to be as smooth as possible for all program needs to be as smooth as possible for all involved. So it is for this reason that we would like to reiterate ORC's position, that the city provide guidelines for tenants and landlords for before, during, and after the inspection process. ORC strongly reiterates that the scope of the inspection must be made clear and limited in its focus, the suitability of the dwelling. In order to be successful, this program must be seen as one that intends to enhance the health and safety of renters in Oshkosh and not an investigation into their private affairs. As ORC has referenced in the past, there is a legal distinction between administrative and investigative criminal searches, and we stress that the city inspectors be held to that distinction. In closing, I would like to stress that ORC's mission is one to serve tenants. We would obviously like landlords to cooperate in this mission, but a line must be drawn when misinformation is being spread throughout the community. ORC wants to assist tenants with any type of dispute they may be having. We are constantly posting news from around the country and linking resources via our Facebook page, Oshkosh Renters Coalition, and we can also be reached at oshkoshrenterscoalition@gmail.com. This is an ongoing process. We want to talk to members of the community, we want to hear stories, and we want to generate productive discourse to identify and solve the problems of the landlord-tenant imbalance in Oshkosh. And we will not be dismayed by internet trolls, nor will I personally lose sleep over being accosted at work by the, he announced himself as the head of the Yellow Sign Campaign in town, perhaps you've seen those. He also made contradictory statements about that mission, I would clarify later if asked. And we strongly feel that we should not let assumptions and questions make these decisions for us. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the audience and the council? I see no one coming forward. We'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. One, reported bills by the finance director. Two, receipt and filing of common council minutes from January 24, February 14, and February 21, 2017. Receipt of claims filed with the city's insurance company, A. Julie Mayer, for damages to her vehicle from hitting a rock. Resolution 17-66, award bid to J.K.S. Wisconsin Inc., DBA Service Master Building Maintenance for Cleaning Services for Go Transit 2017 through 2019, $77,040. Resolution 17-67, award bid to Biko Inc. for flooring replacement for the Oshkosh Public Library, $26,965. Resolution 17-68, award bid for Public Works Contract Number 17-07 to Michael Civil, a Division of Michael's Corporation of South Park Basin retrofit, $2,903,967.86. Resolution 17-69, approve engineering services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for construction-related services for contract number 17-07, South Park Basin Resolution 17-70, award bid for Public Works Contract Number 17-04 to Carol Bowers &amp; Sons Construction Company Inc. for paving, sidewalk, driveway, and utilities, first local street concrete paving program near east side, $4,053,058.15. Resolution 17-71, approve engineering services agreement with CH 2M Hill Engineers Inc. for phosphorus preliminary compliance alternatives, $249,805. Resolution 17-72, approve amendment number one to professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. for environmental and engineering services related to the former Keene's and Paulus Quarries, $23,770. Resolution 17-73, approve change order number one for Public Works Contract Number 15-09, Aviation Business Park, $109,617.58. The next five resolutions are for special events this year, and I will not keep repeating special event for the year 2017. The first is Resolution 17-74, Unabega Audubon Society and Oshkosh Bird Fest Committee to utilize Menominee Park for the Oshkosh Bird Fest, May 6. Resolution 17-71, 75, excuse me, Hoagies Bar to utilize Menominee Park, Millers Bay, for the Hoagies Ball, I Warm Up, May 27. Resolution 17-76, Catamaran Racing Association of Wisconsin Inc. to utilize Menominee Park near the Beach House and Lake Shore Drive for the Crazy Cat Silbo Regatta, July 6, 7, 8, and 9. Resolution 17-77, Robert Frost to utilize Menominee Park and city streets for the Robert Karen Frost Wedding, July 22. Resolution 17-78, Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 437, to utilize South Park War Memorial for the POW MIA Remembrance Ceremony, September 16. Resolution 17-79, approve waiver for Kavanaugh's carriages to allow horses in the city through December 31, 2017. Resolution 17-80, disallow claim by Rose and Chloe Wan Schneider. The final resolution is Resolution 17-81, approve special Class B licenses, operator and taxi cab driver licenses. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any of these resolutions? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, no discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Piansky.
Aye.
Stepanek.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate 7.
Where no items removed from the consent agenda, so we'll go to pending ordinances. Versus Ordinance 17-82, repeal and recreate Chapter 2 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to administration and Article 1, Division 2 of Chapter 16 of the City to Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to anti-discrimination in housing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this pending ordinance? I see no one coming forward. I'll take it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor. About a year and a half ago, you might remember, I brought some fair housing code changes to council at that time, as we dug more into the municipal code, whereas the city attorney dug into the municipal code, realized that it needed quite an update. So I just wanted to commend the city attorney on a job well done. This was no easy task. But these fair housing codes will now bring us up to the state standard where we need to be, as well as protect the transgender community as well in fair housing code disputes. So this was a lot of work and it's very much appreciated.
Mary?
I'll echo council member Stepanek's comments there as well, but I think we're also going to be looking at another commission in relation to that, according to whether or not there might be anything filed, the Fair Housing Commission, is that right?
There actually was an existing commission. They just haven't had any filings for a number of years. There is currently an agreement where everything other than the gender protection are covered under our state agreement. We do need to keep that commission in place because we are adding that additional protection, so that wouldn't be covered under the state agreement, so.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
If there is no further discussion or questions, I will ask the city clerk to take the roll.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Piansky.
Aye.
Stepanek.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curate 7.
Next, we move to new ordinances. We have four, and there will be no formal action taken in these items at this meeting. The first is Ordinance 17-83, repeal and recreate Chapter 26, Trees and Vegetation of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code. Advisory Parks Board recommends approval. Next is Ordinance 17-84, approve rezoning 900 North Kohler Street from SMU Suburban Mix Use District to SMUPD Suburban Mix Use District with planned development overlay. Plan Commission recommends approval. Next, we have Ordinance 17-85, approve rezoning 1218 and 1226 Whitsel Avenue from UMU Urban Mix Use District to SR-5 Single Family Residential 5 District to UMUPD Urban Mix Use District with planned development overlay. Plan Commission recommends approval. And then the final is Ordinance 17-86, and then Section 8-1.1 Perrin B. Close Perrins Hotel and Motel Room Tax to clarify ordinance pertaining to convention center debt. We now have new resolutions. Resolution 17-87 has been withdrawn by staff. Resolution 17-88 has also been withdrawn by staff, so that takes us to Resolution 17-89, approve installation of new sidewalk on North Kohler Street from Lombardi Avenue South to existing sidewalk in Beach Street from Viola Avenue to Stillwell Avenue.
Lombardi Avenue is in Green Bay, that's Lombard.
Lombardi.
Here nor there.
It looks the same. Is anyone from the public that would like to speak to this?
I'm up here?
Yes.
So I'd like to name the city council members.
First, I'll name your, name and address.
I'm sorry, Heather Flower. 1971 Beach Street. I would be one of the five property owners that would be affected by this proposal. I would like to pass around a packet of printed pictures of our neighborhood taken off of These pictures will show you the arborvitae trees that would be affected by putting in a sidewalk. One of the reasons that we brought this house and property on Beach Street was because of the privacy and beautiful nature appeal of these arborvitae provided the property. We also don't have a whole lot of pedestrian or auto traffic on our street. We really feel that having a sidewalk on the east side of Beach Street is more than enough for the few people who utilize it. I have spoken to the other four neighbors and not one of us want the sidewalk installed as we would need to take down or alter the arborvitae, and it would change the whole natural aesthetic look of our neighborhood. I did some looking back in the minutes from December 13th of 2016, as recommended by council member Lori Palmary, on a very similar proposal that was made to put a sidewalk in on Bay Shore Drive. And in that meeting, due to the trees and the natural aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood being altered, the council voted against having the sidewalk put in. I feel that our neighborhood situation is very similar to that neighborhood. We have just spent over $1,000 per property owner last year to have these arborvitae trimmed, and to have them removed would not only take away some of the natural beauty of the neighborhood, but I strongly feel it would also lower the property value. As you can see from the pictures, we don't have clearance for a sidewalk to be installed without damaging or removing the arborvitae. Also, we have many cardinals, chickadees, finches, squirrels, rabbits, and chipmunks that nest in those. Any questions for me?
Counsel?
Let me just clarify. Yes. The other six members of council voted against that. I was voting for the sidewalk in December.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I misspeak? I think you're the one who guided us towards the minutes, and we thank you for that. Yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
You're probably gonna see some of the same pictures, many of this wall. I meant 1941 Beach Street. Some pictures, some little maps, and then some that we take ourselves. I wish I did. Sorry. Thanks. So, as my neighbor Heather touched on, we do not have very much foot traffic on Beach Street. So, I mean, handful of people we see walking dogs or maybe walking to school, but there is a sidewalk on the other side of the street. So it's not like it's a street without a sidewalk in it. So that little bit of foot traffic, in our opinion, okay, seen animals, the neighbors, is that it doesn't justify the cost of thousands of dollars. So, let's see. Installing the sidewalk will ruin the aesthetics of our neighborhood. As you can see in the pictures, some of the, I think it was the fourth to last picture in there, it'll show you a street view, and you'll see our side of the street with the hedges, and you'll see the other side of the street without the hedges, okay? And I ask you to consider which side of the street you would rather live on, okay? The hedges are very beautiful, and they're very, I mean, we paid a premium to move into a house with this type of privacy in the middle of the city, okay? So, you know, if you take a look at that picture, we could have chosen, in fact, when we moved here, eight years ago, we looked at houses in Town of Algoma, okay? I mean, that was in the country. We thought, well, this house in the city gets as close to the schools that we want, and we still have the privacy, okay? All right, so if the sidewalk comes in, I think the hedges have to go, okay, because they're too close. And to move them, they're too large. If you see the pictures, they're too tall to move. They would not, they would not make that transplant of any sort. So you're talking about taking them down, reducing the property value, even a reduction in property value of 1%, okay? You're talking a few thousand dollars for those houses, okay? That's a big deal. And then to replant that, okay, if you look at per hedge to plant an arborvitae of similar size, it's cost prohibitive, okay? And we want that privacy, okay? So I looked just quickly, I mean, I have a question for you. If they're removed, who pays for that? It's the homeowner too, right? Am I correct?
James?
James?
Typically, it would be all the costs associated with that sidewalk would be assessed.
Because to remove a shrub, I was quoted, a shrub, not a hedge that's 15 feet tall or 12 feet tall, a shrub, $100. You're talking about, between all of us, probably 100 hedges, okay? That's just the front. And who would like hedges on their side yard without them in the front? So we have our side hedges go too. You're talking, I mean, right? I'm just asking a question here. Who would want side hedges without front hedges? It looks kind of silly, okay? So you're talking a lot of money being spent. Or we pay to have new hedges put in further back. Also, cost prohibitive, as I discussed. So you're talking between the cost of the hedges, and I haven't even, I haven't touched on the sidewalk. The cost of the sidewalk, that's irrelevant. I mean, if it was just that, I would have no problem, but the fact that everything else, it just doesn't, doesn't fit our neighborhood, I don't think. You're talking, you know, per house, $5,000, $10,000 excluding the cost, lost property value, more for a sidewalk? That seems really steep. There are other places in Oshkosh where I think a sidewalk would be more valuable. I don't want to point fingers, I'm not gonna try to tell you to your job or anything like that, but there is Jackson Street, okay? Those of you familiar with Jackson? But there is Jackson Street, okay, those of you familiar with Jackson Street, and Zaroni's and St. Vincent de Paul, and that area, there's no sidewalk there, okay? They probably get more foot traffic on Jackson Street in an hour than we get in several days, okay? So I would like to really, I want to, I want to know, you know, what this is, you know, why, why is it Beach Street, okay? There's also, you know, no sidewalk by the school, okay? So the track and field there, if you put a sidewalk in by us, there's no sidewalk by the school, okay? So where are they going to go to, okay? And we do have the sidewalk on the other side of the road. I just, I see all sorts of issues, okay? A lot of it has to do with the fact that we love our house the way it is. It's, it's private. We paid a premium for that house. We've got young children. I like the fact that when they're out in the front yard, I can keep an eye on them, okay? And it feels like they're private and protected. You make me take those hedges down, I don't feel the same way. So, in short, you know, reasons to say no, not enough foot traffic, okay? Ruin aesthetics of our neighborhood. We really like the seclusion. We picked this place of all other places. We looked a lot of places inside Oshkosh and outside. It's going to be a very expensive bill that we'll have to foot for something that we don't want, okay? We're talking couple thousand, a thousand to two thousand for the sidewalk. Removing just the front hedge is another two, three thousand dollars per household, okay? Sorry, just one second. Decrease the value of our house by probably at least five thousand dollars or more, okay? And so you're, you're talking that, that's a lot of money, and it's, it's, I don't, I don't want to live in. I would not want to live there, to be honest. I would consider moving. I'm young enough, I would definitely consider moving. But, and if the decrease in property value happens, I don't know what that does for assessed value of a house and taxes, but I guarantee you that matters, too. I don't know if you want to.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this?
Good evening. My name is Phil Clayton, and I'm at nineteen eighty-one Beach Street. And I won't take much of your time, but I just kind of wanted to echo what all of my neighbors have been saying. Sure that that's on the record. And then, also, yeah, I mean, I just reiterate that it's a really quiet neighborhood. My wife and I have been there for about a year and a half, and we really, really like the place because of how quiet it is, because there's not a lot of people that are walking through there. And with that being said, I would also reiterate, you know, about thirty-five feet away on the other side of the street, there is a sidewalk. And so I just, I really don't see the point in putting it in, and I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Then race up nineteen twenty-one Beach. I kind of want to reiterate just about everything they said, except that I want a little farther on. I would hate to look at the property, and that's the reason why I bought it twenty-two years ago, because of the shrubs. They've been there for at least thirty years or so, about. But I got thirty trees in the front of my house, arborvitae. To replace them is twelve dollars a foot. They're about twelve to fifteen feet high. What am I getting at here? Well, anyways, it's going to be about four and a half thousand dollars to replace it, if we replace them, plus removing the trees. And they'll be rooted out and have somebody install them and deliver them, because this is just wholesale price. I just love the place we're at. That's why we bought it twenty-two years ago, and I still love it. And I hate to see the trees leave, just for a sidewalk that isn't needed. Thank you.
Gary Garby, eighteen forty-one Beach. I own two lots, and there is no place to put the snow. The shrubs would have to go, if you look at, because when the city comes through there and plows the snow, you got the sidewalk. Got to contend with. If you look at those pictures, no place to put it. Sure would raise hell with the beauty of that area. You drive down Beach Street, it's a pretty nice looking street. Put a sidewalk in there, and you're going to really destroy it. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this resolution? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Discussion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to propose a resolution to separate this resolution into two separate resolutions. Maybe one as A seventeen dash eighty-nine A, which would be North Kohler Street from Lombard Avenue South to existing sidewalk. And then B seventeen eighty-nine B would be Beach Street from Viola Ave to Stillwell Ave.
If the gentleman would give me a moment to say something, I would. Actually, I was going to make a motion to amend, to strike west side of Beach Street from twenty-five feet north of Viola Avenue to sixty feet south of Stillwell Avenue. As far as council people go, I don't know. I think I'm closer than you are, Ms. Allison Osby, to this, aren't I?
Yeah, we're both pretty close to this area.
And I've lived in that area for pretty close to thirty years. I walk my dogs through that area. I've run through that area. Excuse me. Yeah, I, I understand bike and ped, you know, we want sidewalks added and everything like that, but, but this is one of these things where right now, the sidewalk comes in, and there's a way where it ends on the west side. You can get over to the other side. Fact of the matter is, is that the people that I see out there, if they head down Stillwell Street, they don't walk on the west side, they all head over to the east side as it is. So I would, with your permission, I would, if you could withdraw yours, then I would, I would seek to amend this by striking this.
That's fine.
All right, so then I would make, I would make the amendment to strike beginning at west and then going through avenue.
Just, I have just one question, Mr. Robby. This just follows our ordinance that putting sidewalks into a neighborhood area that currently does not have sidewalks, correct?
Yes.
Wasn't a request from any citizens or any, any neighbors in that area requesting a sidewalk on the west side?
Not that I recall receiving.
Okay. And I guess, just to reiterate what Mr. Peck said, is, I mean, when you have all the citizens against this.
There's no motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
We need a second.
Oh.
A second.
I thought there was a second between me and Herman.
There was.
That's before.
No, it was Peck's call. For Peck's motion, we need a second.
All right, I'll wait. Okay, so, so then for my amendment.
I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you. I, I guess, you know, our role up here sometimes is to listen to our citizens and what is in the best interest, so I would support that amendment to the, to the resolution.
We need to take a vote.
Paul Mary?
No.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curated six-one.
You need to do the.
Resolution.
Resolution as amended.
So I need a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
On the floor, just a vote.
Oh, the revote.
Do you do the roll plays?
Paul Mary?
So we're voting on the Kohler section only now.
Correct, the resolution as amended, yes. Aye. Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curated seven.
Next, we have resolution seventy dash ninety. Approve tax increment district number thirty-one. Project plan, designate tax increment district number thirty-one. Boundaries, create tax increment district number thirty-one. Buckstaff redevelopment. Plan Commission recommends approval. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this? I see no one coming forward. I would ask for a motion in a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, and Mr. Davis, you're already up here.
All right, a couple of things that this is obviously related to the, the new arena being built for the D League. Couple of things that I, I just want to reiterate. This arena is being privately funded. There is no city tax dollars going into this. Correct. Correct. And the way that this tax incremental district is designed, or is written, is that this is a pay-go-tiff, that the city is not investing any money into this, that basically the developer will be covering all of the costs for the improvements the city is putting in, correct? Correct. All right. And the pay-go-tiff will be repaying the developer for the public improvements and some site improvements necessary to bring it up to a buildable condition. And while it could be argued that, in essence, tax dollars will be refunded to cover the cost of these improvements, if it were not for the development of this eighteen million dollar facility, the city would not have the, that eighteen million dollars of tax increment which will benefit the community, correct? Correct. So the, the, the exposure to the taxpayers is minimal, at worst, zero at best. I could go along with that opinion, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, in your notes, you have it as a blighted area, and I know we have applied and gotten some grants.
Yes.
Already. Would there be any grants that could assist in the future for blighted condition, even though we create a TIF district?
We do have one grant application into W E D C right now that we're hoping to hear within the next month or so regarding some of the public improvements. Beyond that, once the building is built, it's basically, we, we passed the deadline for applying for additional grants for that specific site. We can certainly apply for more grants for anything else that we want to remediate or remove any blight in that neighborhood, though.
Okay. And this, this TIF is only for, from Eleventh Avenue to South Park. It's not the whole Sauters City District that we talked about.
You are correct.
So we may, somewhere down the line, if there is other economic development, we may end up creating another TIF, or will we be able to open this TIF and roll some more things into it?
Yes to both of those.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Davis?
Actually, I would just like to ask, Alan, could you talk a little bit about the potential additional assessments to those properties outside the TIF that are adjacent that could end up?
Yes, it's possible that on Eleventh and South Park, there are adjoining property owners. It's possible, but it's not a yes or a no that I can give you today. I think we have to do the research, the survey work, and do some design, and come up with some cost estimates. And that will come back to the city council to determine if this is all going to be a TIF expense, or is it going to be partially assessed, or some kind of combination?
Very good, thanks.
Just one, just so everybody understands this question. In all our tips, we have the but for question, and you determined, or elders actually determined that without a TIF, correct? This project could not go forward.
That is correct. Well, the Plan Commission and the council, as part of the resolution, has to find that, and I think we provided the, the blighted conditions, the remediation needs, and the but for this project, we would not be able to get this arena constructed.
Okay. Thank you.
If the council has no further questions, for Mr. Davis, would the city clerk please take the roll?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curated seven.
We move to resolution seventeen dash ninety-one. Approve development agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc. Propose multipurpose arena at twelve twelve South Main Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this?
I missed my chance on the last one, so I'm going to try to speak on this one. Jason White, total four, Fairfax Street, here in Oshkosh. Just add another point to the discussion is, this, today I asked a member of our team to look up the traffic count that goes by Buckstaff every day. And he came up with a figure of ninety-nine hundred cars that pass by Buckstaff and have passed by Buckstaff every day on average for the past ten years. And over the course of a year, it's three point six million. Now, that in and of itself doesn't mean a lot to me until I start thinking about who is in those vehicles that pass by Buckstaff every day. And some of the things I've come up with are Oshkosh Corporation board members, EAA AirVenture visitors, farmers markets attendees, someone interviewing for employment for a position in our community, someone choosing a college, someone attending Waterfest, someone looking to buy a home. All of these folks who potentially have had their opinions formed about Oshkosh for the first time by passing Buckstaff. I certainly was one of those two years ago. So what has, for years, represented a symbol of blight and decay in our community is now a symbol of hope and positive transformation, made possible certainly by the efforts of the city, but especially through the efforts of Winward Wealth Strategies and Fox Valley Pro Basketball. So you have in front of you a development agreement between the city and Fox Valley Pro Basketball. And while it has scored very highly, the thing that I've been very impressed with is that this project has scored very highly with the citizens of this community. In fact, what has made this project so rewarding is that it's received amazing support from citizens throughout the community, students, families, sports fans, non-sports fans alike, rallying to hashtag bring the Bucks by pledging support for the team, but also buying tickets. And as high-profile projects go, this has been one of the most popular projects I've ever had a chance to work. We had over a hundred people turn out on a snowy winter night for a neighborhood open house, allowing for conversations between the city, staff, and the developer and neighborhood residents. Citizens have spoke in this room, from the podium, unprompted on several occasions, to offer their support for this project. One thing we don't know is what happens next after this project is completed. But what we do know is what is likely to not happen without this arena. And believe it or not, even before we even heard about Fox Valley Pro Basketball, we had had several conversations with folks about the potential of locating one day in the Sauters District. And some of those replies included, I see what the vision could be, but this area doesn't look good, and I don't want to be the first one in that district. I do not want to be surrounded by blight for ten to fifteen years. I can't take that leap of faith at this point in time. And so not everyone is willing to go first, but Greg, Fox Valley Pro Basketball, and the Milwaukee Bucks are putting their faith and investorship behind our community and the vision of the Sauters District, and others will certainly follow. So I want to thank you for your support in the last item. I want to encourage your support in this agenda item. And thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hello. My name's Wendy Hillsburg, and I'm the director of the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. Been there almost twenty years. And this is just about the most exciting thing that's happened to Oshkosh in a really long time. My heart pounds when I think of it. So I'm so glad you passed the TIF, which was a huge milestone for this. But this is such an amazing opportunity for Oshkosh. Besides the addition of jobs, which is a huge thing, jobs are huge in this community. But this venue will attract people from all over the state. And it's not just to play or to watch the Bucks play. It's another sporting venue. It's a concert venue. It's a meeting venue. It's sexy. I mean, I've seen the blueprints of it. This is a really cool thing. I mean, I've seen the blueprints of it, this is a really cool thing. The venue will be used by the Bucks during the months of November through March, but then the facility can be used for endless opportunities. We don't have a venue that can host four thousand people right now, so it's a whole nother niche for tourism. I've talked to Greg several times, and the intent for what this facility is going to be used for is endless, it's flexible, we don't even know the potential that this has. The players will live here in our community. You talk about diversity, you talk about amazing sports athletes here, we're going to be kind of like the miniature Milwaukee and Green Bay. And I also saw with the press, with the press release when they came, and there's kind of a bridge between Milwaukee and Oshkosh. I mean, the Bucks will be kind of become a part of our community, which is really, really exciting. And then that whole South Main Street District, I mean, that, when we direct tourists to come into this community, we don't take them down South Park. I mean, when you hit the end of South Park to go to a convention, to go to the amphitheater, to go to an event, that's an eyesore. This is going to be so amazing. So from the community standpoint, this is really cool. I travel the state, and my peers, we're the talk of this community, we're the talk of the state. This is like, I believe seven communities bid for this, and Oshkosh was chosen. I mean, do you know how proud that makes citizens here and how cool this is? The Oshkosh Area Community Foundation is launching the Quality of Life campaign, and I believe you put some dollars towards that. The whole concept of that campaign is pride, it's to build pride in this community. And if you read Facebook, you read Twitter, you see the people at the press release, this is a very proud moment for Oshkosh, and I thank you for supporting it. And I'm really excited, can you tell?
No, we couldn't tell.
I'm not a very good basketball player either.
You're not tall enough.
Hi, I'm Bill Wyman, I live at thirteen-seventy-three Wagu Avenue. I am the president of the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. I guess I don't have a lot to say except the, this community looks so different from it did, the way it did thirty years ago. Excelsior's gone, Payne Lumber Company looks different, there's no Morgan Company, there's no Axel, that, those were all blighted areas. They were Diamond Match Company, all those areas were, happened to be most of along the river. But what we've done to this community by taking over blighted areas and turning them into something that's, that's progressive and, and cool and pride, all those things are great, and I commend the council for the past, what they've done, and I'm sure you'll do the same, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Zach Clark, four oh six East Irving. I am currently a partner with Fifth Ward Brewing Company. We recently purchased the property of ten oh nine South Main. It was an area that we took a calculated risk on, and to us, it was worth it. Now hearing what's going on and what's happening is so exciting to us. It definitely helps bring this energy that we need for this community, and being, sorry, a young entrepreneur, it is, it's very exciting for us. This is something that, you know, we've worked hard on for the past four years, and to see this develop is just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Bring it back to the council.
I would so move, move to approve. Discussion. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
The, the energy that we've seen related to this project is amazing. There's several, many people in the community are talking about, Oshkosh is at a tipping point. I got to tell you something, ladies and gentlemen, Oshkosh tipped over a long time ago, and not to pat ourselves on the back, but this council had a lot to do with it, along with the city staff. This city has tipped over to a progressive, leading community in the city, as Ms. Hillsburg talked about, that people in the, in the state are watching us. People who say the status quo has to change. Ladies and gentlemen, status quo changed a long time ago, as Mr. Wyman pointed out. These are the types of things that are moving the city of Oshkosh forward. There's a friend of mine who moved here in nineteen sixty-nine from Milwaukee, his mother was aghast that some of our streets didn't have curbs and gutters. This gentleman lived in Oshkosh all his life, went to school, came back, taught in the Oshkosh Public School System, and just about a year ago I was having a conversation with him, and he said, "You know something? Oshkosh has never looked better than it does now, but I know what it's going to look like in the future." This is, these are the types of projects that are moving Oshkosh forward. And I heartily approve this and look forward to the ball going up. However, I do wish that there was a refrigerated floor in the, in this facility.
Open the windows. I'll add to what Ms. Hillsburg said, what Councilman Peck said, you know, we, we are being watched by other communities in the state. I'm getting phone calls from other mayors, such as the mayor of Milwaukee, mayors of Beloit, mayors of Racine, they're watching us for this, they're watching us for our rental inspection program, they're watching us for how we're doing neighborhoods. We have, we have gone from just being a city to being kind of the role model for other communities in this state. We're the eighth largest city in the state, but I think we're being viewed as the most progressive, the most dynamic, the most positive of any other city in this state. And I made a comment at the press conference, you know, Oshkosh was once the second largest city in the state. It was incredibly wealthy because of lumber. It was considered a boom town, and I think what we're seeing now is a second boom town in this town. It's just, it's, it's, it's a rebirth of a city that was very kind of down on itself and was just very complacent. So anywhere you go in, in the state, I've had phone calls from high school friends from California that have heard about this, and what's happened to my hometown, they're just, they're so excited to see these changes, so I'm very much in support of this as well. And thank you, everyone.
So everyone's really excited about this project, and I'm excited as well to see others excited. I'm not a huge sports arena fan, but I do think that this is a really good example for what we would use the TIF incentive for. However, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask some questions, and one of those relates to Exhibit C under the estimated project lists. Mr. Davis, could you please just talk a little bit about this two point five million dollars in development incentive interest that's part of the project list cost?
The developer will be providing cash upfront for this project. It's going to take the city a number of years to repay that, the public improvements and the site preparation. So typically, we've negotiated an interest rate that would not only reimburse the principal, but an interest, and the interest piece is the one that's called out. That interest was determined largely based on how quickly we could take, pay things off, the higher the value, the quicker things pay off, and the less interest we have to pay. So this is our best guess as to what the interest is. I don't think it's going to be that exact number, but that's our best guess based on the economic conditions we know of today.
So does that mean then that if the developer is actually able to get a lower interest rate, some of that would be reduced, or would we be locked into that five percent?
We're locked into that five percent at this point, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further questions from the council? If not, would you please take the roll call?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Resolution seventeen-nine-two, approve repayment terms for TIF number twenty-five, City Center Hotel rehabilit, rehabilitation, rehabilitation to repay TIF number seventeen, City Center redevelopment for public improvements already completed prior to anticipated closure of TIF seventeen in two thousand twenty-eight. One million three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? I see no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Davis, lots of words there, can you help, we've all got the memo.
Yep.
Can you explain it for the?
Explain it to the, to the viewing public?
Absolutely. TIF twenty-five is the Best Western Hotel today, that was the City Center Hotel renovation that we did a few years ago. TIF seventeen is the city center, which is just to the west. At that time, we were doing that riverwalk behind city center and the hotel, we were also making some street and storm sewer improvements there at Sepian Market. At the time, TIF twenty-five didn't have any funding in it, we didn't get any money upfront from the developer. In this particular case, we had to use the city's own money instead of actually going out and borrowing that money and incurring an interest cost. It was thought that the best alternative would be, would be to use the, the cash balance in TID seventeen to pay the contractors for that work, and then TID twenty-five would be able to repay TID seventeen before it closed, so that the city avoided, I guess, the, the interest cost that Ms. Paul Mary referenced in the previous TIF.
Okay. So we use some investment returns to reinvest and build the community?
Yes, and we'll make sure that the city center, now the Best Western, will repay that other TIF, so that each TIF will come out whole.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I just want to, I guess, make sure I understand this under the analysis of the memo where it talks about, TIF seventeen would still be terminated in two thousand twenty-eight, but TIF twenty-five may require an advance from another source in two thousand twenty-eight. So if in fact then TIF twenty-five does end in two thousand thirty-two, we'll have like a four-year period, where we'll have, where we're kind of have to cover that gap, is that what it's saying?
Yes, and that could be, again, it could be with city borrowing, it could be using another existing TIF with a positive cash balance that, that TIF twenty-five would have to repay. But that's just a predict, projection ten or eleven years from now, so it's really hard to say exactly how that's going to turn out.
Who knows, maybe that'll happen with TIF thirty-one, the Saudas, or the arena.
I am cautiously optimistic, it'll have a nice cash value by two thousand twenty-eight.
Thanks.
If there are no further questions for Mr. Davis from the council, I would ask a clerk to take the roll.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Stepanik.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Curried Seven.
Next we have council discussion, direction to the city manager, and future agenda items. Number three, future workshops.
None at this time.
Next we have update on charges for extraordinary services for special events two thousand seventeen. These will be discussed at the March fourteen council meeting. If you want to make a comment, the city manager and I have discussed this briefly. Last week, we had a listening session with a lot of event organizers, there's a lot of good dialogue, a lot of good ideas. The more I've been thinking about it over the past week, and this really goes back to a meeting we had at the leagues, Urban League in Manitowoc last year, it became a joke after a survey was done about the heaviest drinking cities in the country. Number one was Appleton, we were number two, followed by Green Bay. And I think, you know, while we've got so many positives going on right, right now, so much forward movement, I don't think we want to be known as the second heaviest drinking city in the country. So I think we should look at these, the special event policy, have two, if you will, priceless or menus, one deals with those events that have no alcohol, and those events that do have alcohol. And I think Chief Smith would agree that those with alcohol cause the greatest problems for the police department, probably the fire department, paramedics. An event like Turkey Trot, there is no alcohol, it's a family event, so I think we have to serious look at how we handle these type of events, there's with alcohol and without alcohol. So that's my two cents worth.
Ms. Gorilla, several council members were in attendance, several were not, I was one that was not. Are you planning on some kind of minutes from that meeting, kind of synopsis of what took place for those of us that weren't there? Because I'm hearing a lot of, there was quite a bit of contentious moments in the meeting, and there was quite a bit of, you know, back and forth stuff, and so I'd like to get as much information as possible on this, and then obviously you'll be giving us some other information to why we would be going with this, extra charges and things like that.
Yeah, we didn't necessarily take minutes of the meeting, but we will encapsulate some of the comments that were heard. Frankly, I thought the conversations, even though there was a little bit of tension, were very civil, I think people expressed their opinions and concerns about it. There's a variety of different groups, because the diversity of the organizations that have special events go from for-profit to small nonprofit groups and everybody in between. So I think we got a lot of good comments. What we plan to do is address some policy options for council to consider based on those comments, give you the relative fiscal impact of all of those, and just basically give you those as, as options to choose from, give you the components of the different changes in the fee policy.
I attended the meeting, I thought it was very positive, there were a lot of, there were a lot of items that were out there. I don't think contentious is the right word. I, I think that it was passionate, that there are people that truly believe in their organizations as, and as an event organizer, I believe in my event, and, and I'm, you know, concerned with the costs that are being added on to that. But city staff did a very good job in explaining and addressing some of the misinformation that is, has been spread about this particular ordinance, and especially the ten percent administrative fee, and that it is not, this is not three point five million dollars that we're talking about. Yes, it is a significant amount of money, but it is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what the cost of this is. So it is not three and a half million dollars, and I think that's what, I think the best part of that meeting was that it, it brought forward, let's call it the facts, as opposed to the.
Turn me to the facts.
I didn't want to go there, but you threw it in there, so I'm not going to argue that. So that was really what it was. We heard a lot of good things, many of the organizers that were there said that they would, that they want to actually sit down, form a working group with the city, and I'm hoping that we, and, and I know I've talked with Mr. Roloff about this, as well as Ms. Snell, and that I think this is a very good idea, and I, I think we look forward to it. So I think that the biggest takeaway from that was is that everybody is on a better understanding of what is out there, and that really the, the true costs and the, the facts were presented at the, the meeting, and I think everyone comported themselves very well, city staff as well as the organizers.
I guess moving forward as, as we're working through this, and as we decide how we, how we want to deal with this, I, I want to make sure also too, that, you know, one of our main stakeholders that we partner with here is the CBB. I know Ms. Hillsburg is here, and so, you know, part of her job is to bring in events into the city. Obviously, there's a lot of positiveness from that, but I think in whatever decisions we make regarding fees, or if we need to take a look at certain type of events, I think we have to make sure, and I just want to make sure that all discussions include, you know, Wendy and her staff.
I think one of the comments that Mr. Peck made, and I neglected to mention it, so thank you, during the discussion, we did bring up the topic of if we want to take a look at all the components of our fee structure and our costs, really, the structure of our costs, that perhaps having a, a group of stakeholders in special events, and I would think amongst a lot of people that the CBB would be a. a lot of people that the CBB would be a, would be a great asset to that, to that committee.
Because, I mean, one of the things is, you know, I think we have to look at, there is a reality, there's only, there's only so much we can do, and there's only so much police staff and law enforcement that we can hire. And, you know, I've seen and talked to other communities that, you know, draw in a lot of events because of the great location that they are in Wisconsin, but you can't necessarily always hire security in the form of, you know, you can't just have random security have guns and cowboying it through events. So I mean, with some of the things that have come in, I mean, we do have to rely on our trained law enforcement to make sure that, that they're there. But, you know, we may at some point have to say, there are certain events that we want to draw in and certain that we don't, but then it's a fine balance because we don't, we also don't want to be sales prevention for the CBB and drawing folks in. So I think it's a very delicate balance and people not to come in, but whatever that discussion is, I think we just have to make sure that all parties are at the table.
So I was there at the event as well, and while I believe, at least in my part of the room, there were some tense undercurrents. Staff did handle it really well, and it was healthy. It was healthy discussion, it was healthy engagement on the part of the event organizers, questioning methodologies, questioning data. Our staff was prepared and receptive to looking at this as, going forward, as Ms. Osby was referring to, you know, looking at having quality events, not just quantity events. So I was really, really proud of how that went. But I would also, I think that there are some other cities that are looking at, you know, jurying their events to get that quality rather than trying to, I guess, double book, if you will, on some of these timeframes that are available. So going forward, I would also encourage people who are not just event organizers to speak up, so that would include event attendees to voice their opinion as well. I didn't really hear much from that part of our citizenship speaking. That's all.
Anyone else? Next, we have the update on commission discussion of alternative for Jackson Oregon Street Bridge, and that will be March twenty-eighth, the council meeting.
Yes. There are a lot of feedback we got, not just from individual council members, but from other boards and commissions, that they would like to see a rendering to get an idea of obstructions that, particularly the one option where it's a free span bridge without any, without any lift bridge, and that, that would impact visibility and how it would, how it would look from the vantage point of the bridge, as well as the vantage points from the various points along the river. And Mr. Robby had a discussion with Bill Bertrand with the Department of Transportation. I think James made it pretty clear, we really need to see something to look at so you can react to something like that before you've made a decision. It'll be a few weeks before we see that, so we've put it on the March twenty-eighth meeting. That assumes that we get a drawing for the plan commission to look at, which looked at it. Several of the boards and commissions, the council members are on...
Yes, we did look at it as well.
You heard it.
We wanted to see.
We want to get that out, and when we get it, we will disperse it as wide and freely as we can so everybody can get their two cents in about it.
They seem very agreeable when we said we wanted to see, we've got to see something.
Yeah, the DOT was very concerned about the schedule and trying to maintain the schedule that they have. I mean, it may seem like two thousand twenty-two is a long time away, but in order to get through the process, it does take a very long time. But at the same time, they did understand that, you know, we can't make a recommendation like this without seeing that extra bit of information. So they're working with their consultant to get the contract amendments in place. They originally thought it was going to take them several months, but they came up with some alternative ways of getting kind of an existing photography viewpoint to be able to shorten that timeframe. And Mr. Bertrand did indicate to me that he thought he would have something for us the week prior to the March twenty-eighth council meeting.
By the way, Mr. Robby, welcome back, Dan.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to the second portion for citizen statements to council. Citizens are addressed to council. Only statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include any endorsements or other electionary.
My name is Patricia Deener, and I usually been working with Dave Pot, but he is retired, so I will be talking to Jim Roddy. I tried to work with the work people, worked with sanitation and all that. My husband just had some major surgery, and he's been, he used his electric wheelchair the other day. I have brought it to council a few years ago. I've been at the house, been three or four years now. In regard to sidewalks, I know you guys did custard, but I think that you need to check Tennessee when you're old and broad. When you use electric wheelchair, you're getting heated up. You use the push one, you're getting heated up for the sidewalks, and I wanted to know if something can be looked into. If mine has to be repaired, I don't mind, but there's a lot of people in our neighborhood, and we have handicapped people over on Melbourne and Jefferson, they circle all different areas, and I feel that needs to be taken care of. So if you can check into it, I appreciate it. I know that Dave, Dave works a lot with me and the other Steve, but I would like you to address you and the council. Everybody don't want sidewalks, but when sidewalks need to be repaired, they should be repaired and not wait for paternity to happen. Thank you.
Now, we're at the point of council member announcements and statements. Mr. Stepanek, you're on.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate the council pushing this off to this meeting. I was fighting off the flu a couple of weeks ago. I meant to have this under council discussion and direction, and that was just my mistake in communicating that with staff. But back in September, I was looking through the minutes, the general direction from council was to start a diversity committee. At that time, it was kind of left that staff was going to start putting something together, but would come back to council for direction and kind of bounce through the process. We had a bucks announcement, a lot of stuff happened in between then, so I just wanted to stick it on the agenda to see if we can kind of jumpstart that process again, and if there's anything staff might need from council at this time.
I don't think there's anything we need from council at this time. One of the reasons that we held off was after the council gave me direction to take a look at boards and commissions before we pare it down. Before we add, did you want to pare it down? If you want us to fast-track that or put it into a different track rather than the consolidation, we can certainly do that. I think things got away, and I'll take responsibility for that. Appreciate your understanding that, but that's, after the council gave me that goal, I sort of looked at it that way. If that, if I read that wrong, I certainly am happy to put that on a different track if that's what council wants me to do. Because that was something that we did talk about amongst our options for the diversity coordinator was having diversity committee, human relations commission, that type of, that type of committee to get reestablished or reformed into something new, as Councilor Stepanek pointed out. So I'm happy to take direction on that. What I can do is put it on the next agenda, since I didn't put it under discussion, I'm sorry about that. We can get it on the next agenda, but if you could think about those things, that's kind of what I'm thinking of rather than get direction. This isn't the area for that, but we'll put it on and we'll get that, get that going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pack?
Yeah, and I know I did send an email to several, to council today, just a reminder, and to the general public, this coming Saturday, March fourth, 3:00 PM, at the Twentieth Street Avenue YMCA, is the Guns and Hoses Police and Fire Charity Hockey Game. Come on out, have some, watch some really, really good hockey. If you have children, you can win an opportunity to ride on the Zamboni, which is pretty cool. But council, I've asked you, and many of you have gotten back to me about dropping ceremonial pucks, and no, you don't have to wear skates. But to the teams that are going to be playing, they can make contributions to the Three Blind Mice Trust Fund in the referee's room prior to the game. So hope to see everybody there.
I'll be there. Now, it's city manager announcements and statements time. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items in your agenda packet. First of all, we purchased the pickup truck that was approved in the budget for the museum through the cooperative purchase agreement we have with the state of Wisconsin. Buckstaff demolition, that's been a fixture on the agenda. It's there, but we have items on the agenda the last couple of meetings, so there's no other additional report to have on that. Engineering services agreement for Snell Road West Pump Station, there's some work that we need to get done about the control systems that are there, computerized or...
Yeah, it's really getting the programming in place, not only at the pump station, but at the wastewater treatment plant, so that the operators sitting in the control room at the wastewater treatment plant can monitor the function and if there are any alarms appearing out at the pump station. So it's that remote access and control that we need to get underway as that pump station nears completion.
So this is engineering services, so it's, we awarded that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
And James, this is just a one-time thing? This isn't like a yearly thing that we have to do? This is a one-time setup and it's complete?
Yeah, this is one-time modifications to our system control software so that they can add all the controls for the station and get the radio telemetry, because the pump station does talk via radio signal back to the wastewater treatment plant. So yes, it's a one-time thing, getting all those controls set up.
This is that new pump station that we put in there?
Yes.
And this kind of adds to the city's kind of resiliency too in terms of, in the event of an emergency situation?
Yeah, the control systems are there in place, so there's only two facilities in public works that are staffed 24/7, 365, the wastewater treatment plant and the water filtration plant. So if something happens at any of our sanitary pump stations, it's an operator sitting in that building that's staffed all the time, will be able to see an alarm right away, and, you know, if they need to make phone calls to get somebody in, or they can go check things out right away. So it improves response to limit our exposure to a potential issue from a backup or worse.
Many communities that I worked for in the past, as opposed to having what James just described, there was a little red alarm light that would flash, like the top of a police car, but a resident would have to drive by it, or a police officer, and then call it in. In this case, it's immediate. The response, alarm, one of our folks looks at it and says, we got a problem. They immediately dispatch somebody. It's not until, it's not just doing it by luck, it's doing it by actual monitoring. So it's, thank you for bringing that up.
Like smart monitoring.
Yes, very much so.
Before you go on, could you go back just briefly on the Buckstaff? I was going to ask you a question. I noticed that you took something off the plans on the public improvements. You crossed out reconstruct 12th Avenue West to Main Street to Nebraska?
Yeah. Were you at the meeting when we approved the SBA payout?
Right.
Okay. Over the course of the initial engineering work, we were originally looking at having to do some sewer work on 12th Avenue. We have found that we can achieve that by sending the sewer two ways rather than having to completely reconstruct a sewer on 12th Avenue. It's probably going to save us about eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's why the cost of the TIF that the council just approved went down by, well, not, it's eight hundred thousand less the other one forty that we paid off for the SBA, so about six hundred fifty thousand, give or take, that it saved on that. And that doesn't include a potential grant that we're applying for, for other public improvements. So we've already got that down by six hundred fifty thousand. Did I do a good job on that, Alan?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, speaking of savings, happy to report that we received, we received a report from the Three Waves Health Clinic that the total savings for the clinic for all of the participating agencies, and that's Winnebago County, the Oshkosh Area School District, and the city of Oshkosh, is five hundred thousand dollars for the first full calendar year of operations. Usage was up by, city employees by about 92%. So people are starting to get a hold of it and make, it's becoming part of our health care habit because we're going to, going there. They do some great work, they do great preventive work. You know, I myself have experienced that, heard feedback from other employees. Now, the half million dollars is for everybody, our share of that was over eighty thousand dollars. We're only a 20% share of it, so that, that's in keeping with, with our usage, but we're very pleased with the clinic, what it's been able to do, and happy to report that, and hopefully we'll get more reports as people hear about it, the word gets out, more employees use it, and they start using it on a more regular basis. It's going to just save us more money each and every year.
And just so, go ahead.
A question on that. I think we briefly talked about this before. If we were to look at an option of self-insurance for the city going into the next budget period as an option, how would that work with the clinic? Or would that be impacted?
Wouldn't change it at all. You can use a clinic like this with or without self-insured. And we've got a great relationship right now with Group Health Trust because they essentially are fronting the cost of that clinic. It would be self-paid, but we would make it work within that scenario. It's pretty easy.
This is, as you indicated, this is the joint effort that we have with kind of a walk-in clinic with the school district, the county, and the city. And this is, you know, we were one of the, again, Oshkosh taking the lead in that we were one of the, we weren't the first, but we were right on the cutting edge of establishing these types of partnerships. And as indicated, it has saved the city significant amounts of money within our health budget. And for every dollar we save, that's, you know, something that we can invest someplace else for, you know, hopefully don't have to pass along increases.
I was just reading an article that talked about these types of health clinics. They're, they've become very common in the private sector, not so much in the public sector, but there's only about 9% of all local governments in the country that are using that. That's up from 7% just a couple of years ago. For that to move that 2%, that's pretty substantial. We're part of that group that bumped it up that much. I don't know how much quicker it's going to move, but we get questions all the time from other communities looking to do this, and we're very proud of this. And I just, I see this as a coming trend that we're on the front end of it.
Yeah, and they say that for, the numbers are out there that for every, it's like for every dollar that you spend in preventative services, you can save, it's anywhere from five to 10 dollars in healthcare causes down the line.
If you go into the lunchroom, you'll see that we've got a big poster up there announcing that we've hired a wellness coach, and that's just one of the services that we knew we wanted to do because it's all about wellness in terms of getting that coaching to improve your health care. And we're promoting it a lot, and it seems like people are picking up on it, so we're real excited.
Right.
Right.
That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.